I want to thank you for being here tonight for our second meeting in June. We're always glad to have a good crowd, got some interesting things happening tonight and some nice recognitions, and we appreciate you being here. I'm going to lead the prayer and the pledge, if you'd like to join me, appreciate it if you stand. Father, we want to thank you for this day, for the country we live in, and for the county and city we live in here in Rome. We're glad to have meetings that all of our citizens can participate in. We ask you to protect our service people around the world and especially be with the citizens of Ukraine during this trying time. We ask this things in Christ's name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have several people signed up for public participation tonight. I'd like to remind you, when you come forward, you'll have three minutes to speak on the topic that you'd like to speak on. If you'd give us your name and your address before you start, and the time will be on the screen behind me, so you can keep up with where you stand with your time. Our first participant tonight is Jerry Salter. That's Jeremy, sorry.
Yes, your honor, yes. Honorable Commissioner, I rise today to speak on behalf of the issuance of a special use permit in the operation of a tree service off of Zero Chulio Road.
I think that we need to wait till we do our public hearing on that.
Yes, I think that's what I was intending to do, so.
Yes, not at this time, right?
This is public participation right now.
Yeah, so it doesn't have anything to do with an item on the agenda? Okay.
Thank you, that's a good point. If there are any things that are going to be discussed during the public hearings tonight, if you signed up for public participation, this is actually a different thing where you can come and speak about an issue that has an interest to you. So if any of the people that I call your name, if you're going to participate in the public hearing, sorry about that Jeremy, I should have seen, you'll have your time during that. The next one is Shirley Roden.
She's the same with it.
Now, are you here for the zoning issues? Well, that'll be later in the meeting.
Just a few minutes, we'll be to it. We'll call you up just a minute if it's related to the zoning, sorry, we're...
Okay, Jeff Covington, is that the same situation? Okay, thank you very much. And the next one, I believe, is the same thing as Nino?
Nino.
Same thing, okay.
Okay, perfect.
Good, we'll get, all of you will have your opportunity when we get to the public hearings. Thank you Rhonda for catching that.
Great.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of our June 14th meeting? Seeing and hearing none, those stand approved as submitted. We've got special guests here tonight that have some great words of wisdom for us, and so our first special recognition tonight is by TRED, our Trails Group, and I'm going to ask Julie Smith to come forward.
Thank you, everyone. We have some gifts for the Floyd County Commission, and then I'd like to say a few words. So, TRED is happy to deem Floyd County Commission and Jamie McCord as Tredheads, and let me tell you what a Tredhead is. A Tredhead is a noun, and it is a person who understands that trails contribute to healthier communities, make economic sense, are inclusive of everyone, service transportation corridors, decrease mental stress, and overall create happier people. So, I have my board with me, Harry Brock and David Mathis, and they will present Tredhead shirts to you guys, so thank y'all so much.
And you have sized these correctly?
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you so much.
And if I might just take a moment, this is the big week for us, the Redmond Trail ribbon cutting is this Thursday, so if you'll allow me just a few minutes to kind of give a little bit of backstory and again to thank this body and this commission. Ten years ago this October, a group of citizens sat in this very room during a county commission meeting and advocated to the then Floyd County Commission to fund a portion of a GDOC grant that would keep the Redmond Trail project alive. Because if the county did not show a significant progress toward providing funding for the environmental and archaeological studies by that November, the very next month, the project, which has been, had been discussed since 2007, would die. So, a call for a motion was made, and Commissioner Rhonda Wallace, I'm happy to say, made a motion to defer the request in order to allow more time to find community partners that were interested in investing in the project. She stated at the time that the county does not have the money to pay for the full project, but was interested in investigating who might want to help contribute to save the grant moving forward. Her motion was seconded by Commissioner John Mays, and it was carried. And I'm happy to tell you and very proud to tell you that one month later, a check was presented by the community partners to the county commission in the amount of $43,111. And that money went toward the 20% match requirement. The City of Rome then committed $37,500, and the Redmond Trail project was saved. But little did anyone know that the obstacles for such a short quarter-mile paved section with a 100-foot span bridge would be so onerous. Multiple project managers, work scope changes, cost overruns, fighting with the railroad for an overhead canopy, archaeological studies, a study to see if the Indiana bat species was along Kalini Way, and many other things happened in those 10 years. But TRED advocated and pushed, and county leadership rose to the top and said, this connection, the very first connection in our trail system, needs to happen. And engineering, poor Bruce Ivy, Bruce, thank you so much for all of your work, you deserve 10 Tred shirts, thank you. And so, like I said, the ribbon cutting will happen this Thursday. But that community partner turned into what we now know as TRED, Trails for Recreation and Economic Development of Rome and Floyd County. We are a unique public-private partnership that work with two bodies of government because we know that working together works, because we've seen it time and time again. So since 2012, TRED has partnered with the City of Rome on the SPOLOs-funded Mount Berry Trail. We're working for an expansion that will go to the Brave Stadium, thus creating the second connection. We've built six miles of mountain bike and hiking trails at Jackson and Blossom Hill. We've built 12 miles of mountain biking and hiking trail at the former GE facility in West Rome with all volunteer labor. We've teamed up again with the county, with you guys, for the Lindell Trail that will connect downtown Lindell to downtown Rome. And perhaps most importantly, we have touched countless lives, heard many personal stories, and seen firsthand how safe outdoor recreation and transportation spaces have the ability to transform lives and communities. So thank you Floyd County Commission on behalf of TRED Rome Floyd for being the impetus for our foundation. Thank you so much for helping us connect community, we appreciate it.
Julie, you know that my feelings about our trail system, and we appreciate you. It's wonderful from this side of the thing when we have citizens participate and go out of their way to make things happen like your group does, and it's a great thing, and we greatly appreciate what you do. Our next special recognition, I believe there's someone here from the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police, Georgia's, to come forward, and Mark Wallace, you and anybody else who wants to come forward, it'd be great.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Grover, and I'm the coordinator for the State Certification Program for Georgia, and it's my honor to be here tonight in front of you to recognize the Floyd County Police Department for their recertification. As you all know, just by watching the news over the last several years, law enforcement's been getting beaten up in the media and by certain factions around the country. I'll be the first one to tell you, and I'm sure these gentlemen would too, that some of it's our own fault, but the majority of it's not our fault. It's just people with misinformation or their own agenda for whatever reason. The purpose of this program is to allow agencies to meet certain standards for law enforcement. Our program's been in existence for about 25 years now, and if you think about it, if you've got a police department that meets certain state standards, their policies and procedures are written in accordance with those standards, the officers and employees are trained in those policies and procedures, then when they get out on the street and they, they're doing their job and they're following all of that, the chances of a successful lawsuit against the county is very minimal. Now, I didn't say you're not going to get sued, because we all know you're going to get sued eventually, but chances somebody beating you in a frivolous lawsuit and you paying out multimillion dollar lawsuits is almost zero. So, as the leaders of this community, that should be a huge benefit for each of you. The analogy I like to use, if you're wondering why they do this, the analogy I like to use is would you send your family or take your family to a hospital that didn't meet certain standards for healthcare? The answer should be no, I wouldn't. Would you send your kids or your grandkids to a college or university that didn't meet certain standards for higher education? Again, the answer should be no. If you take that same analogy and apply it to law enforcement, the big difference is for the first two, they have to do it. They're required to meet certain standards. For law enforcement, this is something they choose to do, because they want to be the best they can be. And that translates not only for the department and the employees, but for you as the community leaders and for the citizens of this county. So whether they realize it or not, this department is exemplified by meeting all of these standards. And it should be something that, as the community leaders, you should be very proud of, of this department. So, without further ado, Chief, step up, this is their, this is their certification plaque for the next three years until 2025, so they are one of only about 20% of the agencies in the state of Georgia that are state certified. So this is something that you should be very proud of, and I know they are too. Chief? One thing about this program, it should be a top-to-bottom process. Everybody in the department should be involved in it, and I think in this case they are. But there has to be one person in the department that kind of pulls everything together, and makes sure all the policies and procedures have been written in accordance with the standards, all the documentation for three years is there, because not only do they have to say they do it, they have to prove that they do it as well. We don't give this pro, this award away very lightly, you have to earn it, and they have. But the one person that pulls all this together is the certification manager. So, this award goes to Captain Greg Dobbins as the certification manager. Greg? One more thing that I started doing when I took over this program about 16 months ago, is I think it's important, and I think these gentlemen would admit to this, it's important for the department to do this, but it's also important to have the support of you as well, because they can't be successful without support from either the county commissioners or city council or whoever it happens to be that are the leaders of the community. So what I've got for you is a small token of our appreciation at GACP for your support of the police department. So Greg, if you'll... This is just a little wooden coin or poker chip, if you want to call it, that supports the program, and also there's a brochure that tells you just a little bit about the program. One of the things that, if you look at that little coin on the back of it, or what I considered the six main tenets of what certification is all about, and if you think about those tenets in relationship to your department, these are things that you, you would not want your department to do without. Professionalism, operational guidance, which is the policies and procedures, positive community support, they can't do anything without the community supporting them, transparency. You know, you hear that a lot around the country, well, people are going to make mistakes, officers are going to make mistakes, and when they do, the department needs to step forward and say, yes, we made a mistake, but this is what we're going to do to fix the problem. You can't just keep everything behind closed doors, because if you do, the media's going to fill in the blanks with whatever facts they want to come up with, which usually is not going to be accurate. You want ethical conduct, you don't want an officer working here that's not ethical in what he or she does. And then liability protection, regardless of who you get your liability insurance premiums from, from the fact that they are state certified should, should help you in reducing your liability insurance premiums, regardless of who your carrier's from. If you get your insurance through the Georgia Municipal Association, through GERMIA, it's a 20% discount. If it's through somebody else, that's something you have to negotiate with them, but it should be a tremendous benefit to you as well, knowing that this department has done what it's done and will continue to do what it's doing. So with that, I thank you for the, your time and allowing me to be here tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
We are, we're extremely proud of our county police department, and we're extremely proud of Greg, I'm glad he does what he does for you, but we're also proud that he provides us security during our meetings, so very good, thank y'all.
We're so glad that y'all are here tonight, I'm going to read this proclamation for you, this mic is moving around. This is from the City of Rome and Floyd County. Whereas Redmond Park Hospital Inc., DBA Advent Health Redmond, was established on July the 4th, 1972, with a vision of providing quality healthcare to our community and the surrounding communities. And whereas their mission is to provide top-level care as they extend the healing ministry of Christ to patients and families and help the community feel whole. Their service standards, love me, make me, make me easy, keep me safe, and on it, are reflected in their interactions with patients, guests, and each other. Whereas Advent Health Redmond is a full-service 230-bed medical surgical hospital, serving as referral center for all of Northwest Georgia and parts of Alabama. And whereas in 1975, Advent Health Redmond opened the first cardiovascular laboratory in the region, and 1986, Advent Health Redmond began offering open-heart surgery, making it the first and only full-service heart hospital in Northwest Georgia. Advent Health Redmond is the only hospital in Northwest Georgia holding the state's highest designation as a Level 1 Emergency Cardiac Care Center, offering a full-service emergency room and ambulance services across the Northwest Georgia region. And whereas Advent Health Redmond offers a full array of inpatient and outpatient programs, many of which are unique to the Northwest Georgia region, and has earned eight disease-specific certifications from the Joint Commission for Outstanding Care in areas of cardiology, stroke, orthopedic surgery, spinal surgery, and vascular surgery. And it has also been named by IBM Watson Health as both a top 100 hospital and a top 50 cardiovascular hospital. And whereas Advent Health Redmond supports Rome, Floyd County, and other Northwest Georgia communities by providing uncompensated patient care, charity care, uninsured discounts, community partnerships, sponsorships, chaplain care, and much more. Now, there be it resolved that the Rome City Commission and the Floyd County Board of Commissioners do hereby congratulate Redmond Park Hospital Inc., DBA, as Advent Health Redmond, on their 50th anniversary of providing quality healthcare to Rome and Floyd County and surrounding communities. It's signed by our mayor of the City of Rome and the chair of the Floyd County Commission.
Well, thank you for reading that, I know that was quite a bit, but as you can hear, the reputation and the work that Redmond has done for the last 50 years is both remarkable, and we're grateful that the community has allowed us to be here, because without the community, we wouldn't be able to do what we do every day. So we're fortunate to be here, and we look forward to another 50 years, and appreciate your support, thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all for coming and being with us tonight. We have two public hearings tonight on zoning issues, and I'm going to ask Bryce Wood, our representative from the Planning Commission, to come and read those. After he reads those, we will open the public hearing, and this will be the time when those of you who signed up earlier will be able to speak, and our rules of engagement on public hearings are that you will have, after the presentation is made, you will have 10 minutes to speak in the affirmative, and then 10 minutes to speak if you're opposed to the action, and the time will be recorded on the screen behind us so you can tell where you are on that. So, but when you come up, if you would, give us your name and address when you do that. Bryce, if you'd lead us off with number one.
Yes, sir. The first item is SUP 22-06-01, this is a special use permit request regarding Zero Chulio Road, Floyd County Tax Parcel K15Y150A. Quest is for a tree service, the property is already zoned light industrial. Let me go ahead and tell you that we would like to update our staff recommendation as it is not accurate or relevant, and that is truly the planning department's at our, lays at our feet. This is the property outlined in red, it's on Chulio Road, it's a little over three acres in size. The property is zoned light industrial and is surrounded on three sides by suburban residential. Suburban residential is zoned properties. Understanding that it's continually been zoned light industrial, this was not something that was done in recent history. The property has previously been used for a different tree service. We have identified that a tree service does not require an SUP to be located on the property. However, it's our understanding that the business has exceeded what we would typically classify as a tree service. In this case, the SUP is not necessary, it's not relevant. This does come with a denial from Planning Commission of 6 to 2, and Planning Staff agrees. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. We'll now open the public hearing, and those who would like to speak in favor of this proposal, you have, have your time.
Good evening, Honorable Commissioner. My name is Jeremy Salter, and I'm a resident and a business owner here in Floyd County and in Rome. My business address is 501 East First Street, Rome, Georgia, 30161. My residential address is 200 Bass Avenue, Rome, Georgia, 30165. I'm before you today to advocate for the issuance of this special use permit. My client, Sheldon's Tree Service LLC, has been an operating business in Northwest Georgia and in Rome and Floyd County for almost 50 years. Employees, four employees beyond my, the business owner, two of which are residents of here, Rome and Floyd County. This tree service is seeking to continue to do what it's doing, and what it is doing is acting as a tree service. My client's company not only removes trees from people's property, it's located and identified very valuable lumber. This lumber could be properly categorized as wholesale trade. It's unfortunate that the code doesn't contain a definition for wholesale trade, it does talk about wholesale trade regulations, but doesn't really define what wholesale trade is. The closest definition I could find comes from the city of Lake Alfred in Florida, where it defines wholesale trade essentially as those things that help build industry. These valuable trees that my client are collecting from the properties that would normally be discarded are indeed valuable trade implements that are used for building materials. My client seeks to sort these very valuable inventories on his property, and based on my reading of the code, this would be permissible. Now, I feel at the mark of a good code, you don't have to deviate too far from it. And what I've learned under the review of this county's code, is under the, under the purpose of L1, L1 Light Industrial is intended to provide areas of light manufacturing. Use that primarily involves finishing or assembling of previously manufactured goods, the district is also intended to provide for a location of wholesaling or warehousing uses, as well as office uses. It's my understanding that there's been some indication that, you know, an office should be on this property, that's simply not what the code states. If we go further into the code, under Section 3 and the chart provided at 3-2, it provides several things that a L1 property is allowed to do. One is a matter of right without any sort of exception, one is a matter of right with certain exceptions, and one which would require a special use permit. I point the commission to page 82 of the code and 3.2, Chart 3.2. As a matter of right without limitation, a company on L1 property is allowed to have wholesale trade, including the storage of that wholesale trade. Now, what the company is not allowed to do is provide outdoor storage, that's also on page 82, without meeting certain conditions. And those certain conditions are codified at 4.2.9. And they specifically state that if you're going to store material outdoors, there must be a fence that obstructs it from any road of at least eight feet. We would ask that this commission issue a special permit, special use permit, that allows my client to store his valuable wholesale trade outdoors. In return, we will comply with 4.2.9, as well as indicated and promised that we are not refining this lumber. This is merely to store very valuable lumber service, lumber goods that would be ultimately used to sell for profit, that would benefit this business, allow this business to grow, potentially hire additional employees, and create new tax revenues for the county. Now, there have been some indications that this is a nuisance. I would submit that the eight-foot wall would eliminate a lot of those concerns. The indication that we are not going to refine these woods would further ameliorate any concern that the commission should have about the storage of these woods. In addition to that, there was a violation notice where it defined these lumbers as rubbish. But I would, I would advise the commission that if you turn to the property code, it defines what rubbish is, and rubbish for lumber is generally tree trimmings. These are not tree trimmings, these are giant logs that my client is accumulating in order to sell to wholesale realty, or wholesale distributor, who would eventually process them on his location. At this time, I'm going to reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal and yield the floor.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Is anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Seeing none, those who wish to speak in opposition, if you'll come forward and give us your name and address, and you will likewise have 10 minutes. I think there are probably several of you, so be cognizant of your time.
I'm going to apologize right off the bat because I had difficulty understanding a lot of what he was saying, so I'm not sure I can address, you know, as I would if I could have understood a lot of it. I have some pictures, if y'all would like to pass them and see them.
Can you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Shirley Roden, and I live at 18 Davidson Drive. I'm going to read part of this because of time limits constraints.
Wait a minute. I'm going to make a motion that we accept the pictures.
Second.
Into the record.
I'll second that.
I'll have a motion and a second to accept the pictures as part of the public record. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Please call her up.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries. The smaller ones that are surrounded by white were taken by the Planning and Zoning Office, and the others were taken by me. That's... And the one thing I want you to know, they do not reflect the site as it appears as much as they should because I couldn't get to the site where it shows all the piles, the huge piles, and I mean huge, massive piles of trees. My property is directly behind the tree service. There's only a few trees, and maybe four to five car lengths between me and this. That's all that separates us. All of this started because of loud noises from dump trucks, heavy equipment, bobcats, mulchers, chippers, and winches, backup alarms on the heavy equipment and trucks, and large logs being dropped into metal dump trucks. The tree service has been sited, but has not only continued, but has expanded and hauls in and dumps massive piles of logs. And in the last hearing, Mr. Covington stated he still intends to go further on the property with his business and his activities, and he's already at least half a city block, probably further. There's three houses. There's two next to me, and then there's one on the corner, and he's going all the way in that direction. In the wintertime, there's barely any trees between me and him. I call Mr. Rubens' office, Code Enforcement. I started with them about a year ago. I've spoken with them. I've spoken with Mr. Newell, Mr. Martin, and Bryce Wood, and I moved on from there. I've spoken about everybody, I think. This is a big nuisance. It's horrible, y'all. This property is not being used as even light industrial. A special permit would be like rezoning this property for heavy industrial use, even though it's a residential area. It's not on five acres, and the noise and the vibration it produces exceed even what that would allow. The special permit for outdoor storage yard, he was referring to as 4.2.9, is not appropriate for what this business is doing. It's transporting in and out at times, and storing or processing massive loads of cut and uncut, large tree lengths and logs, and storing mulch and solid waste on site. There's a short video that you may see in a few minutes. The video's only a minute or so, the noise from this business because we wanted to use the time to speak. I hesitate to call it a tree service because it's operating so much more. I have lots of video. There's three to four hours of it from just this past Saturday, in fact, of the bobcat going back and forth and moving loading logs and dump trucks. I asked in Mr. Newell's office, when we had a meeting, I asked if there was another business like this that I could go and view, so I'd have something to compare what was happening behind me to. I wasn't given any to go and look at, so I looked up everything online. I've ridden by about 15 to 20 tree services, and the addresses listed online. I've seen nothing like this. Most of them are home addresses, and a couple are paved fenced lots where a piece or two of equipment is parked or stored. Maloney's and Gooch, I saw a couple of those lots. Maloney's is out on John Davenport, which is mostly industry. It's not residential. It doesn't compare at all, and it's fenced and it's paved. And Trees Unlimited in Cavespring, which is Mr. McLean's and had a couple of trucks sitting out front, I've seen nothing like this. It looks like a sawmill or a woodyard. I don't believe Mr. Davis, the property owner who developed the neighborhood I live in, I now live in, that owns this property, that he's leasing to Mr. Covington. I don't believe that either one of them... Mr. Covington says he's been in this business for years. I don't believe any, either one of them doesn't know about the zoning rules and guidelines and what would be appropriate in this kind of residential area. I stress the fact that the guidelines for even the current zoning have not been followed. This type business is possibly a tree service plus so much more, should be located on a piece of property zoned heavy industrial that's not adjacent or near to any residential property, and also hopefully located on a major highway, not a narrow, curvy county road that is primarily used by local residents, school buses, and emergency vehicles. There's two ways usually in and out of this area. That's Chulio Road from 411, which this is on, and Pleasant Valley from 27. And that's about it for this area. They're both narrow, they're both curvy, and they're fixing to put in another subdivision. Well, 1,018 homes in this area, y'all know that's planned. We're looking at, this is the only roads we have to travel, these two roads. The safety issues include large dump trucks loaded with, these are, this is unsecured, unrestrained logs. Whether cut up or whole logs are dangerous, especially on this narrow, curvy road with very little shoulder. They're weighted and slow and difficult to shock, stop, or maneuver quickly. This business sits in a bad curve on Chulio Road. I think you saw the error in those pictures that shows it. It's, Chulio's off 411, but a lot of traffic uses this area. The ULDC, or the Unified Land Development Code, describes light industrials intended for light manufacturing and also intended for the location or wholesaling of warehousing, this is what he was referring to, as well as office uses. Light industrial excludes manufacturing or industrial uses that emit odors, dust, fumes, gas, noise, and vibration. I can feel the vibrations when these logs and these trees hit the ground. I not only hear the noises, I feel the vibrations. This district is designed for industrial and warehousing that do not have a detrimental effect on adjoining residential or commercial developments. This is all stated in the Unified Land Development Code. Heavy industrial is intended for the location of primarily heavy manufacturing uses with restrictions on noxious odors, dust, fumes, gas, noise, and vibration. This is heavy industrial. We're past the light industrial, and it still considers noise and vibration. Because of these things, even heavy industrial requires a five-acre minimum lot size. In addition, this location is currently being used as a solid waste disposal site, which has some requirements as mining. They're the same as if you were mining.
I do want to remind you that there are other people that want to speak.
I'm giving up my time.
I only have two and a half minutes left.
I'm giving up my time.
Thank you. If anybody else would like to speak in opposition, we have about two and a half minutes left. Just wait till you get up to the microphone, if you don't mind.
My name is Nina Lojani. It's 16 Davidson Drive, Rome, Georgia, and I just want to reiterate that unless the expert assessment will be done on transportation through the Chulio Road, we are putting in jeopardy, in jeopardy, the lives of kids who are traveling on these school buses, the lives of commuters, and it might be that at some point, we will just recall this meeting with a great regret. I'm not talking about that our life because of this noise and vibration and possibility of the landslide and erosion is getting unbearable. I'm talking about the lives here, and whenever I am encountering a problem, then my approach is to get the expert assessment, conclusion, and report. I think it's absolutely logical. So, right now, before you make any decision, I think that it is necessary to have it in your hands. Otherwise, you can see what is going on in our video, which we have presented, and this noise, which is just a snippet of what is going on in front of our properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? If not, Mr. Salter, you have time to, if you want to use your extra time for a rebuttal.
Yes, thank you. Honorable Board, I would respectfully request that you consider admitting certain pictures of my client's property and letters that my client has received from other individuals, just as the opposition has presented pictures and other evidence. May I approach and present these?
I make a motion to permit the information.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Hancock, to enter that information. Any discussion? Okay. Is there any objection? We'll subenter it into the minutes. Good to go, Jeremy.
Thank you. Honorable Commission, as you can see from the photographs I have presented to you, my client is operating his tree service. He keeps his yard in order. You can see the trucks are orderly, front-facing to the road. The trees, as Ms. Roden indicated, are very large, but are very neatly stacked. I point back to a lot of what Ms. Roden said. One time during the six minutes she used, she discussed the vibration that the trees use when they hit the ground. Most of her complaints circled around whether or not this service should operate on L-1 at all. I would submit to the commission that it's undisputed that my client is allowed to put his heavy trucks on this property. The 3-2 chart clearly allows that. What we're here to determine today is whether or not those tree logs are allowed to remain. And I would go back to my original argument. These tree logs are in essence wholesale building materials that my client uses to make profitable monies through inventory sales. 3-2 allows for outdoor storage with a special permit being issued, so long as that my client obscures the view of those logs, which he has every intention to do. You'll hear from my client in a second, the owner of my client, who will indicate to you he has every intention to put this wall up. He'll further testify that he has never processed these logs. He certainly is going to be moving them around, but he's moving around trash and debris when he's coming back from a tree job anyway. This special use permit won't stop that problem. It won't resolve Ms. Roden's primary issue. It won't resolve the second speaker's primary issue that this L-1 property is located within residential space, but it is there. I would also submit to the commission that at the last hearing, you received a letter from the Secretary of Davis Construction. And the reason we wanted to present the picture of Davis's offices, it sits adjacent to my client's tree yard. And she testified, the secretary testified, that when she's working, they're there dropping these logs, and they do not bother her, right next door to this yard. Honorable Commission, I would suggest that my client is a tree cutter who is able to farm valuable wholesale logs that he would like to store on his property. He's willing to comply with those other aspects of the code that would allow him to meet this special use permit. It was suggested that he could simply solve his issue by putting a truck where logs would be placed in it. I would submit that Ms. Roden has already complained that the sound of wood hitting metal is disturbing to her. Should we have a large semi-truck trailer that he was depositing logs in to store? One, you wouldn't have an eight-foot fence that would hide them, and two, I'd imagine the sound of metal would be very grating. My client's not seeking to do that. My client is seeking merely to preserve his right to store this wholesale lumber on his property, which are valuable channels to him that allow him to make money and increase the size of his business. I'll yield the remainder of my time, Mr. Covington.
Thank you, Board, for this opportunity. My name is Jeff Covington. I live at 4 Downing Street, Rome, Georgia, in Twickenham. I've lived there for 26 years. I take care of the Twickenham Two Entrance sign, landscape it, redid the sign with my own money. I love Twickenham. I don't want nothing to go on with the neighbors. Neighbors are calling me saying she was getting this petition up and trying to do all this stuff. They didn't even know I was down there. I would do everything that you require during, for the SBU, which, if it's required, getting the law, I'll do that. I want to make that as nice as it can be over there. Let me just jump on one thing. I wasn't going to bring this up, but she brought it up about the highway and the housing coming in. I had nothing to do with that because I defended the county and knowing that they would get it right with the traffic and stuff on the highway. A lot of people in the neighborhood or three really attacked me about it. She said I was working this past Saturday. I was at home this Saturday. I don't know where she comes up with this stuff. I want her to know I have nothing to do with the highway or the subdivision coming in, but she brought that up. I'm just trying to make a living. I'm not operating in any different than any other tree business. There's no heavy equipment. There is a bobcat. Every one of my trucks is below C D M. I don't use 18 wheelers. We store logs just to haul them because of the fuel. We store them. Once we get a load, they're going to the yard. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I believe that one thing that we may have missed, I believe some of the people that were opposed to this had a video, or you have about a minute, 15 or 20 seconds left, if you want to present that. Hollis, I don't know how that was going to be done, but... That's, that's the, the best. We're, we're not video people, and that's the best that we can come up with on the way it was presented. So, and anyway, we will, we'll close the public hearing, and I appreciate everybody's participation in that. And I will ask Commissioner Maxi, who is our representative on the Planning Commission, to give us a motion to consider.
Did you have something? Did you have something you were saying?
No, sir.
No, he's getting ready for the next one.
I'd like to make a motion to deny based upon the stated use of the property.
I have a motion to deny the special use permit. Is there a second?
What was, what was your reason for denying, Larry? I didn't hear the...
Of the stated use of the, of the property. They're not going to use it as the tree's service. They're going to have some storage there. It's...
Oh, okay.
Operations going on there. There's not permitted under the code.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Hancock to deny the special use permit. Is there further discussion?
I, I would note, Mr. Chairman, just that this does not eliminate the ability to operate the current business on the property. A, a, even if you vote to deny, as it's been stated, the business can operate. The, what could not continue would be the, the storing of the materials on the property.
And the processing, mulch.
Mulching or any, any sort of processing, but the equipment could all continue to be there, as could the operational center for the business.
Got you. Okay. Thank you for that. Further discussion?
Oh, he clarified my questions.
Yeah. Anything else to come before the group before we vote? If not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Bryce, item two, please.
Yes, sir. The next request is Z22-06-01 for the property at 3749 Martha Berry Highway, Floyd County Tax Parcel J11X095. Applicant owner, Our Merchant Property Management, LLC. They're requesting to rezon from community commercial to suburban residential. This is the applicant parcel outlined in red. It is on Martha Berry Highway in Our Merchant. You see storage units to the south and some commercial development to the north. This is a site-built single-family home, and to my understanding, it's always been used as a single-family home. The applicants are seeking to rezon it so that they can sell it. This does come with a recommendation of approval from staff as well as an 8-0 approval from the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing on item two. Same rules as the first one. Those who wish to speak in favor will have up to cumulative of 10 minutes. Those wishing to speak in opposition will have up to 10 minutes, and any time left can be used for rebuttal. So, are there those who would like to speak in, in favor of this Seeing and hearing none.
I'm Darrell Gilbert. I have owned that property. Appreciate y'all's consideration in the matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darrell. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the proposal? Seeing none, are there those who'd like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I'll ask Commissioner Maxi for a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve the proposal on item two. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank y'all. You're welcome to stay with us, or you can escape. We have no further public hearings, no resolutions. Under Chairman's report, I would like to ask that we appoint Paul Carter to the Alcohol Control Commission for, to a term that will expire August 31st of 2024. Is, is there a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve Paul Carter.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Hancock to approve Paul Carter. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there any commissioner that would like to come in on any of the committees or, or authorities that you serve on? If not, Mr. Mr. Jackson, is there anything from your end?
No report.
Attorney, no, thank you very much. Mr. Manager, do you have anything I forgot to ask you?
No, sir, no report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is the, Ms. L. Rods, the consent order, agenda in order?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve the consent agenda. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. There's no old business. Under new business, we have five items, and I ask Mr. McCord if he will present those.
Yes, sir. Item one, consider requests from Admin Services Committee and IT to approve additional budget increase, the amount of $50,000 for the transition to Office 365. This will include an agreement with Mimecast for email filtering and phishing training as well as backup, backup, Backupify for cloud backup solutions.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item one?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Maxi to approve item one. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two, consider requests from Human Resources to approve a renewal with, for ACCG property and liability renewal for 2022 and 2023 calendar year.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item two?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve item two. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three, consider request to approve employee contract with Bill Gillan, Director of Purchasing. This will keep Bill employed for at least one additional year and also keep the purchasing department in good order.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item three?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Hancock to approve item three. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four, consider request from purchasing to approve request for additional $6,700 for each truck, three, from Peach Straight Freightliner. This is due to supply chain issues and cost increases.
Thank you. We have a motion on item four.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Maxi to approve item four.
Is Brett talking a sermon about it?
No, you can, yes, you can have a sermon about it if you want to. We hope that this does not continue, but unfortunate circumstances, but it's the best outcome that we could come up with, so please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item five, consider recommendation from Human Resources for employee health insurance. I will briefly detail that. We had good discussions in caucus on medical. Medical is recommending a 2% increase, approximately 2%. We actually rounded to the nearest whole dollar, so it's plus or minus on that. The maximum increase will be $16 per month, and there was actually a decrease of $3 on the high deductible employee-only plan. Increase for employee-only with wellness discount was $6 per month, so $3 per pay period. We also had no changes in our other coverages such as dental, vision, long-term, short-term disability, critical illness, et cetera. So, good renewal. Hopefully, we will be continuing to have a good remainder of the year on claims. Our stop loss was the one thing that did increase, and it went up to about a 15% increase, 152,686.
Thank you. We hope we can continue with this. Is there a motion on item five?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hancock, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve item five. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
In executive session tonight, we went into, in caucus tonight, we went into executive session to discuss some legal issues and some property matters, and there was no action taken on those. Is anything else to come before the...
I, I have something real quick, right? We have the Flight Museum. I see y'all discussing, and I remember you from the Airport Commission. That was under consent agenda, so we didn't, we didn't call it out individually, but it was approved. I didn't know if you guys wanted to say anything or... Okay. All right. Thank you for coming. I just, I saw y'all talking amongst each other. I want to be sure you understood what happened.
We, we're very glad to have you continue the lease and looking, looking forward to at least three more years, so thank you very much. Anything else?
Did you want to recognize the two young ladies?
He will now.
Do what?
Do you want to recognize the two young ladies that are here, the special guests that are here from college? I think we should recognize them.
I recognize one of them. Maybe, maybe Mr. Jackson would like to...
I, yes, I would, I'd love to do that. Here with us today are, are, with the County Attorney's Office today are two of our summer clerks who are working with us for at least a portion of the summer from law school. And we have Haley Tate, who is just getting ready to wrap up her portion of the summer with us. Has done some work for the county, has done some research and some things like that on, on county projects, so has gotten a little taste of local government. And, and, and she is, she's in school at Georgia State and has finished her second year, so she'll be going into her third year of law school. And then we had, and then we have Avery Smith, who is also here, and, and she is just starting with us for the summer, for the, for the rest of the summer, and she has just finished her first year of law school at the Cumberland School of Law down at Sanford. And she, she's familiar with some of the folks up here at our, up here on the County Commission, so we're, we're excited for her to do some work for us, too.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for being here.
Yeah. Thank you, Rhonda. That's, that's my second one there is my granddaughter, so I'm really proud of her. Is anything else to come before our group? If not, we stand adjourned.